October 23rd, 2017, time is 7:00 PM. All board members are in attendance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
............................................................
Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. That brings us down to recognition of students, staff, and public. This evening, we're going to recognize Normandale Hills Elementary School as a Minnesota Elementary School Principals Association School of Excellence. Normandale Hills Elementary School has earned a Minnesota School of Excellence designation by the Minnesota Elementary Schools Principals Association. The Minnesota School of Excellence program is a school improvement process that assesses standards for quality elementary schools, including leadership, vision, student learning, staff development, data and decision-making, and active communication. So I'll call upon Dr. Valmuth, Dr. Andy Valmuth, from the principal of Normandale Hills, to talk about the process and the celebration of the event. Either way.
Thank you very much. We're excited to be here. Yes, it was a two-year journey for us. We started, oh, two years ago with kind of an in-depth self-study of what, it validated some strengths, gave us some areas of improvement. And over the second year, last academic year, we spent a lot of time implementing process improvements to try to make what I think is a great school even better. And so, we're excited to have this designation from the Minnesota Elementary School Principals Association. It really is a team effort. We had our committee that worked on the project was made up of, and I'm going to recognize them now, Andrew Kellenberger, Brian Carhart, Abby Cliss, our classroom teachers, Laura Nelson is a classroom teacher as well, John Towey was a parent, Lori Clements was one of our support staff members who was a representative, and we also had Eva Carcione, our youth and family coordinator, as a part of our team. And so, we were really excited to get the designation this summer, and it was a lot of work, but really a great testament to the Normandale Hills School community. So thank you for taking time to recognize us this evening. And again, we have a special celebration that's going to be at the school tomorrow, and I think our board members have been invited to that, and we're hopefully that you, hoping that you can take some time out of your busy schedules to join us and celebrate along with us tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. (applause). Well, that brings us, the next thing is Lights On After School Proclamation. Which? Can I get a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
No, you gotta read them.
What, you have to read it first?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, hold on a second. See, on my, on my agenda, it says, "Call for the motion to approve it," and then I have the proclamation behind here. So let me read this first. "Whereas, the Bloomington School Board stands firmly committed to quality out-of-school time programs and opportunities because they provide safe, challenging, engaging, and fun learning experiences to help children and youth develop social, emotional, physical, cultural, and academic skills. Support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after the regular school day ends. Build stronger communities by involving our students, parents, business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of our young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among children, youth, families, and adults. And engage families, schools, and diverse community partners in advancing the welfare of our children. Whereas, the Youth and Family Department has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement in education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality out-of-school time programs are key to helping our children become successful adults. Whereas Lights On After School, a national celebration of out-of-school time programs, promotes the critical importance of quality before and after-school programs in the lives of children, their families, and their communities. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bloomington School Board declares the week of October 30th, 2017, Lights On After School Week, and be it further resolved that the Bloomington School Board enthusiastically endorses Lights On After School and is committed to innovative out-of-school programs and activities that ensure that lights stay on and the doors stay open for all children before and after school." Now, can I get a motion to?
Mr. Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 authorizes the attached proclamation declaring the week of October 30th, 2017, as Lights On After School Week, the 18th Annual National Celebration of After School Programs.
Second.
Okay. Now, Kristy Christensen, Youth and Family Education Coordinator at Washburn Elementary School, you're here to receive this proclamation after we vote and approve it, but if you could tell us a little bit about the program and what we can expect.
Okay, sure. I'm here with my cohort, Pat, who's also a youth and family coordinator, and on November 3rd, Friday night, at Washburn, from 6:30 to 8, we are going to have our celebration, which we've had for 14 years now, and it just continues to grow. We are hoping to have probably 400 to 500 people, elementary school-aged people, families show up, and we're just going to have inflatables and games prizes, and what else do we have? Face painting, all kinds of things going on.
Yeah, we've got a bingo-type game, we've got a bingo-type game.
Okay.
Bingo-type game. It's not bingo, it's the same style of game. We've also got somebody doing balloon animals.
Police and fire.
Photo booth.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, we're just hoping that a lot of the community comes out and that hopefully some of the board members will also be able to attend.
So, it's usually pretty fun, and it's getting bigger every year. So if you're not doing anything and you want to stop by, we would love it, but it's nice to have the community members come out. You know, the police and the fire come every year, and they have a blast dancing with their kids, so if you want to come, check it out.
And you know what? If you have plans, cancel them and go to this instead.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty big, it's getting pretty popular, so.
Yeah, I take my kids every year, and they love it.
Yeah, you're there.
And they love the dancing. Last year, they were doing the Watch Me Whip song, and the whole cafeteria was dancing, and it was hilarious. So, yeah, we'll definitely be there again this year. I wasn't dancing, I was filming it, but.
You might, I think you were dancing.
So stay right there, we have to vote, so. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of this proclamation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you, and we'll bring this over to you. Motion? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see if I do this one in the right order. Board Student Representative reports, and I believe we have EthermScope Hammer going first.
Okay, so, just want to give a shout-out to Cory Borner, who competed in a regional competition at the Interlochen Country Club for golf. He won his age group and is going to be competing at Nationals during the Masters Pro Golf Tournament in Georgia, I believe. Kennedy's Theater is performing Beauty and the Beast at 7:00 PM on October 26th through the 28th, and at 2:00 PM on the 29th. And then, a reminder to the seniors or parents of seniors that many colleges across Minnesota are waiving application fees for the remainder of October. And then, the Board Student Advisory Council met today. We discussed various items, and we decided that the scheduled meetings would not suffice, and we resolved to meet monthly and hope to narrow what our plan of action will be shortly. And then, another reminder to all Bloomington residents that are eligible to vote, make sure you are registered. There are plenty of opportunities to vote early, and your vote matters, so, thank you.
Mr. Damagala.
This past month at Jefferson, with the 2017 referendum coming around November 7th, we recently had a lit drop. To spread the news to vote yes for the new referendum, over 40 staff and student members, including myself, went around the local neighborhoods, hanging pamphlets on doors to spread the word. It was a great way to stay involved and help the voters stay informed. Staying with the referendum, student council will be running a week-long campaign to promote the awareness of upcoming referendum, with a mock draft in which all students are able to participate. Jefferson last week had their first blood drive of the year, with countless students coming to donate blood for five class periods, as it was all worth it in the end, for you were given a cookie for donating your time and blood. Fall sports are soon coming to the end. Both soccer teams have finished their seasons, but the football team will play in Mankato, their section game, tomorrow at 7:00 PM. We are two months into using the Flex spaces, and everything is running smoothly. Next Monday, the school will be releasing videos of guidelines of the correct ways to use the Flex space as a refresher. Midterms were last week, so that can only mean one thing, conferences. Parents and students showed up last Wednesday for a productive set of conferences for this trimester. And in conclusion, a fantastic and productive time this year so far as we pass halfway through the first trimester. We will hopefully finish the trimester strong. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, that brings us to, let's see here, government classes at school board meetings. A requirement of our 12th grade government classes is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort. Things that they may attend are city council meetings, school board meetings, courtroom proceedings, et cetera. The Social Studies Curriculum Guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations, excuse me, by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. I believe we have some high school seniors in the audience. If you'd like to come up to the podium, just say your name, say your teacher's name, and then, at the end of the meeting, or in one hour, whichever is shorter, you may have your agenda. If you don't have an agenda, it's this green piece of paper over there on the back wall, you have your agenda signed by one of our administrative staff over on the side wall here.
Hi, I'm Anna Marie Gomez, I'm from Storlene's Government Class, so, from Jefferson High School.
Perfect.
And I'm Jillian Choquist, I'm also from Storlene's Class at Jefferson.
I'm Alma Fukada, I'm also from Jefferson High School in Mr. Storlene's Class.
I'm Anna Walter, I'm in Mr. Storlene's Class, and I'm from Jefferson.
My name's Emily Dom, and I am from Ms. Dahl Wylens' AP Government Class from Jefferson High School.
I'm Vivian Pham, I'm also from Ms. Dahl Wylens' AP Government Class at Jefferson.
I'm Evan Foss, I'm also from Ms. Dahl Wylens' Class at Jefferson.
I'm Isabel Cornelis, I'm from Mr. Storlene's Class at Jefferson.
So, thank you. So as I said before, after one hour or at the conclusion of the meeting, you can have your agenda signed by one of our administrators. We also have two young men here who are getting their, or in the process of getting marriage, merit, yeah, not getting marriage badges, getting merit badges from the Boy Scouts. So if you two gentlemen would like to join us up at the podium and state your name. You're in, what school you go to?
I am Kayden Nicholson, I am in 8th grade, and I go to Valley View.
Hi, I'm Sam Nicholson, I'm in 6th grade, and I am from Valley View.
All right, I'm very excited to be here. Thank you for joining us this evening. Let's see here, what else we have? Is there anyone who wishes to address the school board on an item that is not on this evening's agenda? Okay, seeing none come forward, we will move on to Part A. Can I get a motion to approve Part A agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Part A includes board business minutes, personnel actions, field trip approvals, contracts, and agreements, and finance reports. We got a second on that. Is there any discussion on the Part A of tonight's agenda? No? So all those in favor approving Part A, as stated in our board packet, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, and that brings us now to Part B. And we'll start off, we'll invite Andy Coopess up to give us an update on our Bullying Prevention Awareness Month. I'm having a hard time talking tonight, I don't know what's going on. I think it's Dr. Valmuth has me nervous over here.
He does it, does it a lot.
(laughter).
Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen, superintendent Fujitaki, school board members, I'm here, I want to give you a very brief update on just a high-arching update on what's happening with the Bullying Prevention Month. So October is labeled as Bullying Prevention Month. If you look on different websites like StompOutBullying.com, you'll see different activities that are suggested, just to remind us about the effects of bullying and how we can, how we can stop them. But what I, what I want to talk to you about today, just briefly, was how we go about looking after bullying, if you will, in Bloomington. So, it was very, very, it was good. I sent out an email to all the sites asking, "What are you doing for Bullying Prevention Month?" And within two hours, I had 17, I sent an email to 15 sites, I had 17 responses back about things that they're doing. And so, some good news that comes out of that is the work that my colleague Jennifer McIntyre is doing with, with some of her work with Southwood and Pond, Tam received, looks after that, are PBIS sites. And so, we sometimes, you know, overlook things like that when we think about the K5 setting, but we've got a lot of sites who are doing work proactively to stop bullying. And so, a good segue into the fact that I think we look after bullying, we do, do things in three different ways. The first tactic is proactive and foundational. And so, I mentioned PBIS, that a great percentage of our, of our sites are PBIS sites, which is, you know, the work that gets done around making sure that we understand keeping things positive and not necessarily looking for the, for the negative piece, having a ratio of positivity to negative. And a lot of, like I said, the greater majority of our sites do that. The foundational stuff gets to some of the curriculum we do around something called Second Step, where we're teaching students how to have good social-emotional health, making sure we're teaching them on the front end, working with our preschool students to do that. I would say, in true learning supports form, that's the proactive stuff that we like to do, making sure that we're getting this into our students from the very, very onset, making sure we're rewarding the positive stuff. So that's the foundational things. The second part I would add is the maintenance. And so, what are we doing from a maintenance standpoint? Now that we've drilled the foundation, we've got that, all the students learning that. And so, we got, you know, I'm just going to give you, again, a brief overview of trends that the site sent me. So, you get things like Ridgeview, who does a kindness retreat, they just did that last week. And so, again, I would say that, I put that in the maintenance category, where they've, they've taught students how to be respectful and not to bully, now they're, they're just coming back to it from a maintenance standpoint. Conversations that take place in every school. Indian Mounds, Joan Mailin, every Wednesday on the announcements, talking about how not to bully, what not to do, wearing orange, sites that wear orange all the time, making sure that they have that in the forefront. So that's the maintenance part. And then, we have why we're here today, which is, I'd say, the ceremonious or the celebratory stuff, the stuff that we do during this month, and it's the same thing I say when I come and bring you a proclamation about African-American Day or our Indigenous Peoples' Day, that we celebrate them on certain days, so we celebrate and we bring awareness to bullying, but every day, we, we're thinking about bullying here in the Bloomington public schools. And so, it's the same, it's the same mantra here. So, some of the celebratory stuff that's happening, you know, Oak Grove Elementary School, they're having an Orange Out on Wednesday, so all the students and staff hopefully wear orange to bring awareness to it. Conversations that are taking place at Westwood all next week, every Wednesday, I talked about it, Indian Mounds. The middle schools are doing something interesting, it's, it looks like they got together, and they have an event every day this week, or in last week, that they were doing to talk about bullying, getting kids outside on, with chalk and doing anti-bullying stuff, having conversations about, "When did you stop bullying?", or, "When were you bullied?", and processing those conversations. And so, three different tactics, you know, the proactive foundational stuff, the maintenance, and then, as I'm here to talk about today, the celebratory, the ceremonial stuff that happens at all our sites. So, I think it's, it's good stuff that's happening around our, what we call our Policy 514, making sure that we are staying proactive in it, and we're not just waiting for things to happen and responding to them, but getting way in front of them as well. So, proud of all the work that the schools are doing.
Do anyone have any questions? Sure.
Yes, thank you for, for that report. It's wonderful to hear all the, the good things that all different school sites are doing in respect to bullying, such a very sensitive issue. And not, not from the celebratory part, because I know every, each one of our schools has something about it, but at more of the policy level, are there any of the sites, especially middle and high school, that are bringing the policy to the students for a reminder, for an extra awareness of, there is a policy, and this is what it says, this is what it reads?
Yeah, I know, from being a principal, two different sites, that that's something that we talk about at the beginning of every school year. I know the conversation that we had last year, Director Corman was, was around doing, having these conversations, not just at the beginning of the year, but at, every time we have a break, so, after things, or what we call our Thanksgiving break, or winter break, et cetera. So, that's for sure. I did get four schools report back to me that they do this very, very thing, but I didn't include that in the report, because it's just kind of the, the way we do business.
I just think it's important, you know, that we keep bringing those to the attention of the students, because it's something that continues to happen everywhere in every school district, it can happen at any time, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others? Sure.
Yeah, I have a question about the PBIS.
Sure.
I know that, you know, we've been at that a number of years, and first, like, two or three buildings started it, and then it progressed to other buildings, but I know we aren't there with all of our buildings being PBS sites, but I do believe some of them are doing what I would call maybe PBS Lite, they've, they've learned, you know, from other people, and they, they have maybe personally taken training in it, but I wanted to know, is the Department of Ed still offering the PBIS training, and is there a movement to get our other buildings to become school-wide PBIS?
Great question, yeah. We've, the next training cohort 14 for PBIS is November 29th, and so, that meeting is an informational meeting. We've invited all of the sites, as well as the ones who have not necessarily, as you say, they're PBIS Lite, to attend. Several of them had, have acknowledged that they're interested in attending, so we continue that work.
Okay.
Thank you.
I might join you at that meeting.
Perfect.
All right, thank you.
Any others? Okay, thank you, thank you for being here. And that brings us, we'll call on John Weiser and company for NTL plans.
Good evening, Chair, ladies and gentlemen, superintendent Fujitaki, board members, I'm here tonight with Karen Qualley and Holly Scadsum, our digital learning specialists, to talk a little bit about NTL, Next Technologies for Learning. We, we bookend each year with giving the board an update on what our big objectives are of the year in terms of furthering NTL. We come back then with the second bookend in the spring of each year to talk about our results, what we've done throughout that year, what data we've collected, and so on. So some of this might look familiar to you, because we, we do come to you on this topic twice a year. For a little bit of background, NTL started with the 2013 Safe and Innovative Schools referendum, 10-year referendum, so we're in it for the long haul. At that time, our goal is still the same as it was back then, it's to personalize learning for kids in alignment with the strategic plan as students prepare for college and career readiness. We go through multiple phases, and so, we've, we talked in May about leaving Phase 1, where each school worked on implementing one-to-one in their, in the, starting at the middle schools, moving to one-to-one at the high schools, and then moving to one-to-one in personal devices at the elementaries. We left that phase, and we're now entering Phase 2, which is more of a personalized learning So this is a slide from May that you saw, and here again, we talked about that moving out of what we call that foundational phase, three years into this 10-year project, what kind of things did we accomplish? We, we now have one-to-one devices in the hands of 3rd grade through 12th grade, we have personalized devices from early childhood all the way into our adult basic ed program, that first round of digital content, so when we, when we help buildings prepare for this transition, the work we do with staff and professional development, and all the data work that goes with it, getting the right data to the right people as this project rolls. Our message at that time was that we're leaving Phase 1 in May, we talked about leaving Phase 1, moving into Phase 2, and three of those big initiatives that we're, we're going to give a little more detail on tonight are around flexible learning, online learning, and flexible spaces. Just as a side note, I'll say that I get to represent the district as part of the resource management component in the strategic objectives on, on the board back there. Most of what, it might be interesting, if you're listening to this presentation, to note that we don't actually talk overtly a lot about technology, it's not a lot about what boxes we're putting into place, or what gadgets we're buying, a lot of it is in support of our district plan. So it's supporting the instructional goals of our district through personalization, through differentiation, removing barriers to learning, such as access to information, and lengthening the school day, helping students overcome those barriers that learning supports helps wrestle with. So, listen for those things, and you can, and you might not even know that this is a technology presentation. I'm going to have Holly Scadsum, again, digital learning specialist, for focusing on our early childhood. Oh, excuse me.
It's probably a birthday phone call, it's John's birthday today.
It actually is a birthday phone call.
Should we sing?
Should I put my son on? (laughter) I should have thanked you, I appreciate everybody gathering for my birthday, so sweet of you all.
(inaudible).
Um, where was I? So I'm going to hand off to Holly. Go ahead, Holly.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about flexible instruction. We've been building the flexible learning cohort over the last three years. We started with 60, moved to 70, this year, we're up to 160 teachers in early learning through adult that are in the flexible learning cohort, focusing on how they can use the technology to support and enhance their instruction, and how they can utilize that technology in the classroom to give our students more of a student-centered experience. So I'm going to give you a few examples of how we're doing that. So one, I've probably come to you a couple times talking about the 5th grade math cohort. This year is year three, or year two, so last year, seven of our 10 5th grades implemented the self-paced flexible math curriculum. I'm, I'm seeing some nods, so hopefully you're remembering me come to talk about this. Doctor Dave Heistad did a data study, a match sample study for us last spring on how year one went, and so you're seeing those results. He found that students in the flex math classrooms were 39% higher than the students in the match sample classrooms. So, we found in, in year one of implementation that some of those strategies they were using that were giving students more control over the time, place, path, and pace of their learning, was working for students, was helping them feel more ownership in their learning, and we saw the results that kind of matched with what we were hoping was happening in the classroom, and what we were seeing students, what we were hearing students say, and I believe we came to the board one time and showed a video of students talking about their experience in the classroom. So we were happy to see these results and see that what we were hoping was happening matched up with the data. So, another, so that, that was more of the self-paced flexible, we call it flexible model of learning. Also, in the flex cohort, we focus on other models, so you guys have So you guys have all been in elementary schools, so you might remember a model like the station rotation where you rotate from place to place doing different tasks. In our K-2 classrooms, we focus a lot on this model. And we're going to show you a first grade video from Indian Mounds in just a moment here. And when we look at that video, I just want you guys to think about how these different station pieces are represented. And so you're going to see students taking some ownership in their learning. So you're going to see 24 first graders really on their own in the classroom doing different tasks surrounding the standard for that day. You're going to see the teacher doing some small group instructions. So rather than teaching 24 students at once, she's going to be teaching in rotations and really getting that intensive instruction with smaller groups. And you're going to see kids doing a lot of hands-on stuff. So hopefully you're not seeing kids just on iPads. You're just seeing kids talking, collaborating, playing games. And you're going to see around that learning target, just a lot of different experiences the kids are getting to learn that standard. That's the standard.
All right, when you get to this step, what do you think the first step is? You know. Brandon.
You look like I am a student.
Say those words.
I am a student.
Give the baby a hello, say baby hello.
Baby hello.
If you are with Mrs. Mills, can you grab your math mind and play some games until she gets here? If you are doing seesaw, you may get started. And if you are playing box, sit right here. Brandon, in case you are trying to respond. Jonas, did you pick Marsha?
Six.
How many tally marks did Marsha do? Put the number on your chest. Use tally marks to show your number and then use emojis to make a picture of your number. Remember.
I like doing this part, this part, when my words, because I really like it. Where's the best one? We did this one. I like that one too.
I made, I draw dice first and then I just make the number and write the tally marks and just get emojis. Okay. October calendar. It's because I like my seesaw, I love what I did.
So hopefully you saw those different pieces of that small group instruction. When you saw those students with the teacher, noticed that in the different groups, they were doing different things. And so with those station rotations, she's able to really personalize the learning because she knows which kids who are coming to her need what. And I just thought it was absolutely amazing when I went to watch this that you have 24 first graders really taking ownership of their learning on devices with partners. And she does this every day in her classroom. So it's pretty amazing. And back to John's point of moving into round two of NTL, we're really focusing on how are those blue iPads in that classroom enhancing the learning and personalizing it, allowing kids to access content they weren't able to access before. So I will pass it off to Karen, who's going to talk more about flex spaces. Nope, online learning.
Good evening. So I've had an exciting project to be working with in collaboration with curriculum and instruction to support 13 teachers as they continue to create courses that are designed by Bloomington teachers that will be facilitated and taught by Bloomington teachers next year. So this is really a planning year for those teachers as they look at strategies for engagement in online learning, making sure that all of the activities and the assessments are standards aligned. And really just having a high-level conversation about what does it take to create an effective online learning experience for our Bloomington students. And so in that, we meet periodically for full days, but then it's more of a coaching model throughout the year. So teachers back and forth can ask questions, reach out to each other for support, reach out with our partners in CNI as they develop those courses. So it'll be exciting. We're also working this week to meet with principals, APs, counselors to talk about some of the implications of getting courses on the schedule, certain sort of building level policies that might make sure that this goes off well. Flexible spaces, if you haven't had the opportunity to check out the flexible learning spaces at Kennedy, you'll find them within their media center and also on their third floor. They have a room that has common access to the classrooms there. And then at Jefferson, you'll find a few other varieties of flex spaces. You'll see them in the hallway. You'll see them down another hallway where there used to be two computer labs that are now repurposed as, one is a very quiet, silent study independent workspace, another is a small group space. And as we look at these flexible spaces, I'm going to have you change the slide, John. Thanks. We're really supporting the design of these spaces to provide that student-centered learning experience that Holly was talking about earlier. What opportunities do our students have with the availability of these spaces to work in modalities that suit their learning needs, to move at maybe a different pace in their coursework depending on their successes in those classes? And so it's a combination of supporting personalized learning, partnering with the architectures and facilities planning process, and then again, providing offerings for flexible furnishings in a variety of our classrooms and spaces outside of those classrooms. And so just a little update, this is a picture from, that's good, this is a picture from Washburn. And again, we'll be showing some of the images from some of the schools. The way that we're implementing our flexible spaces are through, again, a variety of methods. We'll see that all of the media centers are getting an opportunity to sort of have a springboard of flexible learning spaces. These function as sort of a showroom model for teachers who are interested in looking at the application of some of these spaces themselves. We're also examining those places outside of media centers and maybe even outside of classrooms. This is a picture of the Jefferson hallway on the lower corner. And looking at how instruction can be supported through opportunities to learn spaces like this as well. We're thankful to the Education Foundation of Bloomington for sponsoring many grants in a lot of our classrooms. I think there's a link in this presentation if you'd like to see how many grants at each site have been supported through that process. And then partnering again as part of that facilities and maintenance planning process to look at opportunities when there is construction happening at a site, how can we leverage the existing process to implement smaller pockets of innovative architecture that can enable more personalized learning experience for our students? What you see here is a recent installation of two classrooms, creating kind of a hallway within three classrooms. So there's two glass sliding doors where there used to be existing walls. And the teachers now partner and exchange students in a more fluid manner so that they can provide that targeted instruction through that change in their architecture. And so as we continue through this year, we are continuing to create smaller projects with furnishings at the sites listed above. All of the media centers will receive some funds. And then the middle schools will go to a bit of a larger scale project, not as large as the high schools have seen, but they're planning for that as well. We have three sites that are looking at construction. So Ridgeview is in a construction planning year and they're discussing some of the options that they might implement similar to Poplar Ridge. And JFK and Kennedy are looking at just a few more phases of construction in addition to what was completed last year.
So you've heard me say it before a little bit. I like to talk big picture in terms of as we change instruction, our environment should match those changes. So we're not changing out furniture and we're not doing construction because it's the thing to do. It's in response to the changing environment. When instruction changes, teachers are looking for these opportunities to expand how they do their work in their classroom to partner more and so on. And it's great that we get to be a part of that. So what questions might you have for us?
Actually, I have three questions. The first one is I don't have any power on my computer here, and so it's only going to be 1% till it falls asleep.
Turn it off and on again.
But I'll have to share, and that's what we're all about anyhow. But Holly, when you talked about the first grade with a class of 24 students, so there'd be like eight students per round in the class.
Yeah, so.
Was it one teacher or support staff also?
She has some support in there. Actually, 24 is very large for a first grade classroom. Normally she's at around 18. So she does have some support staff in there, a para during her math class.
All right, swing around, okay.
So it'll be, it's four stations, which kind of makes her numbers a little smaller.
Good. And then the second one was the flex spaces. When I've gone over and visited, it's been pretty nice. Are students allowed to bring snacks, goodies, and everything else to the flex spaces?
It depends on the building and the decisions that that community within that building has made. So for example, I know at Jefferson, snacks aren't allowed in the media center, but there is a more social area that's part of that flag hall where food currently is allowed. I'd imagine everything is up for monitoring and adjusting as needed, but currently in that area, I know students are allowed to eat and drink.
And then there's a, I don't see a vacuum cleaner in there, but I know there's one around for after they get out.
Right, yeah. And I imagine it does present some new challenges, just keeping that space tidy.
Thank you.
I make the assumption, Jim, that the snacks meet with our wellness policy. Well, first of all, thank you for coming. Most of the people that are here tonight don't know that Holly and Karen and Dr. Mitchell were giving a presentation to our BSAC committee just before this. And so they stayed through their working day. They did manage to have some food because we offered some warm and munchy pizza, but they turned it down. Thank you for staying. Thank you for presenting. Thank you for coming back tonight. Two questions. The flex spaces, do all the students know how to use them? Are they available to all the students? The reason I'm asking that is I asked a few students when I was on campus, I think at Kennedy, what do you think of the new flex space? And they were, they seemed a little confused as to who got to use it and when it was available and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I think the ultimate aim is to focus on instruction and instructional use of that space. And so both schools have different guideline uses, again, with the idea that it is a space for all learners, although some spaces have different learning purposes and goals. So I think it's, it'll be a process of revision to make sure that students are communicated to clearly about which space has which type of learning. I think that'll take some branding and some time for students to learn as well. Teachers also, I imagine, are also trying to, if they haven't thought much about how do I provide a self-paced opportunity for students where I know that they're accountable for their learning and they're owning their learning, and then I can get the right data to know that they're successful. If they're not quite there yet, we'll see some teachers using it more than others. And I think it's part of a continuum. You start by creating digital content and then once you get there, you start to create more of those opportunities for your students. So some teachers have reported that they're not using the space. Others have reported that they are. And I think one of our, one of our goals at each site is to collect data about how those spaces are being used so that we can come back in the spring and say at Jefferson or at Kennedy, these spaces were used for these instructional purposes. Students report using the space for these reasons.
Thank you. I did have a chance to use it, one of those taller chairs at Kennedy. For me, being a tall person, it was comfortable. I'm glad that I had the opportunity to sit in it. I do have another question. We've seen the big screen, I'm looking at a big screen television that most of you can't see. We're making a transition, a slow transition from smart boards to the large flat-screen interactive televisions. And I'm just curious to know how that transition is going. Are we, is it smooth? Is it, is it not there yet? Is it?
I can take that. We're in about year two of that process and we're taking it as staff are ready. So if your projector is going out, for instance, if you're up for a renewal, that's an opportune time for you to transition. You've heard us say before that there's much more flexibility and opportunity when you go to a flat panel because that also gives you the mobility of taking an iPad. You saw in that Indian Mounds presentation, the teacher able to get around the room, not tethered to the front of the room. So there's huge advantages, but it is a transition for staff. And so when you're ready, we're ready with the swap out. Most of our equipment swaps out in a matter of five years. So there'll be, you'll see smart boards in our system for another couple of years, I'm sure.
Great, thank you very much.
I think Jackson was going to say something about flex spaces.
Yeah, on the flex space, so Monday, it'll be like a video release to all students about how to correctly use the flex space. And then people know that there's two labs in the flex space at Jefferson, one for group, which teachers can rent out, and that's when people are not allowed in it. And then there's another lab for just students in silence. And then with the smart boards, I just feel like people like the smart boards because they're able to go up and actually like interact with it. With the iPad, they can't really do much. They might have to go walk up to the computer and do it themselves, but that's just, that's just what I have to say.
Okay.
It's good feedback. Don't have to go too far to get student feedback.
That's great.
Sure.
Yes, with flexible learning, what kind of challenges do you hear from teachers? What kind of challenges are they facing right now at different levels? And what steps are we taking to better support our teachers through this?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, the flex cohort is opt-in. So we started with 60, grew to 70, are now at 160. That's an opt-in process, so we don't take anybody that isn't willing and ready. What we do notice though, even people who aren't in the flex cohort, I'll give an example. Last year, I heard from a lot of K-2 teachers saying, "My smart board's going away. You're giving me these iPads, but I'm not really sure what my classroom looks like now. I'm not sure what I do without that whole group smart board tool. And I'm not sure what my kids are going to do with these iPads." And so we heard that and we formed a cohort of 50 K-2 teachers that joined the flex cohort this year, which is why that number went up so high. So currently I'm working through, I'm having 50 K-2 teachers working through an online course in their own time outside of the school day, going through some good professional development. And that will be followed up with two face-to-face PD days where all 50 of them will come in at different points so we can work together and collaborate and share what we're doing. So teachers are able to learn from Whitney Dieterman at Indian Mounds and say, "Oh, that's really cool. What can I do to have that experience in my classroom?" So something we try to do with the flex cohort is say, where are some of our challenges and how can we provide some more support via writing time, release days, to get them what they need?
But in the everyday situation when the kids are using those devices, when they're in their hands, what the teacher is trying to teach, and really trying to help the student to kind of navigate it, are there any specific things that teachers are feeling or kind of sharing with you that maybe there's certain things where they would need more support or areas more than in others in the classroom? I mean, beyond the technical part where you learn how to use certain systems or, you know what I mean?
I guess I might ask for a little bit of clarification. If you're asking about, do we provide device training? And I don't think that's your question. Sounds to me like the flow of teaching in a digital learning environment is a little different than what we might, I don't think it's the correct phrase, a traditional classroom or one with less technology. When we look at, when we look at how that's different, I think every teacher, especially, well, support within the flex cohort can be special, but every teacher in their own classroom. classroom has some building supports. And so we leverage our media and our technology programs at all of our sites. And so that media director, whether it's an elementary, a middle school or a high school, the high school, they have partners who are their digital sort of specialists or technology coordinators. Those teams meet with us monthly in a variety of ways, where we help to build capacity and plan professional learning opportunities, not just for that team, but professional learning that they can take to their buildings to better support that instruction and those teachers. Two of us, as digital learning coordinators, wouldn't be able to offer that kind of support. And so we really do lean on the leadership of that program within the buildings.
And I would add to that and just say, I think last year, in year one of those devices rolling out at elementary, there was a lot more uncomfortable feelings than there are this year. I'm already seeing in year two, so much more things happening because they've had, they have a year under their belts. So I think every year, it'll just get better and become more of the norm of what our teachers are doing with those devices in the classroom. I think, is that maybe what you're talking, just teacher feelings and how they're-
Part of it, yeah. Well, you know, it's not, it's not really easy, especially if you're a first-year teacher or if you've been teaching for many years, but it's your first time teaching with a device in your hand. You know, there's a lot of different challenges, beginning with, you know, how do I use a device? Two, how do I handle this whole group of kids with those things in their hands in the middle of all the destruction and, you know-
Yeah, so I think, I think part of what you're reflecting is, it's a rapidly changing world for our staff as well. And whether that's a new curriculum cycle, whether it's new equipment, whether it's changing demographics, our job is to help make those landings as soft as possible, so that they're not abrupt, that we, that teachers get good support, tiered level support, onsite, good PD opportunities to make those transitions. Because those transitions are coming, whether we facilitate them being smooth or whether they happen more abruptly.
And I'm sure you do that. Now, my other question is, and it's my last question. Looking into the future, or are we doing this right now? Are we thinking about connecting the devices between them? Like, for example, using that iPad and reflecting it onto the smart board, so you can do both things at the same time? Do you know what I mean?
Perhaps. So in, what you might see in that Indian Mounds environment is a teacher working on an iPad that's reflected onto that screen.
Yes.
When she's touching that screen, she, it's been, it's live for what's being presented up there.
And for the students too, that they can all work in at the same time.
Yeah, so that's one of the, that's one of the great future benefits that isn't easy to see right now, is that, once you create that connected wireless environment, then you've got 24 students who have wireless devices in their hands. And if you want to show this kid's work, you don't have to go through a whole rigamarole. You can hand over control. And so it's sometimes, we get comfortable in the technology that we've learned to use over the past few years, and you don't always see the benefit of that new thing. But we're really empowering, like, not only the teacher to be the presenter, but also students to be the presenter. Like you said, every device can now project in many of these classrooms.
Yeah, and I know it makes teaching and learning a lot more fun, once you get to connect all those little pieces together, even though it's challenging and it's hard at the beginning. But, you know, once we get there with the right support, it's actually good.
And stuff will still break down, on occasion.
Any other questions? Thank you.
And I believe that now brings us to policy review. And the first one, I'll invite Jennifer McIntyre to join us. And we've got policy 529. How are you taking that one?
All right. Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 529, staff notification of violent behavior by students.
Second.
So what can you tell us about this policy?
Chair, good evening, Chair Oliva, Superintendent Fujitaki and board members. The policy 529 was an update from a policy that we've had in place for a number of years since 2007. The MSBA came out with a revised policy, and it actually was very similar to what we had in place. It reordered several of the areas. And what I stayed true to was what we had in Bloomington, identifying specific staff that we wanted to make sure were notified at each of the schools, in the case of needing for notification, as well as making sure it was timely. I reviewed this with our administrators across all of our buildings, so they had an opportunity to review this policy before I brought it to the board review committee, prior to review.
Any questions?
Sure.
First of all, thank you for sitting up here. Thank you for coming. I have a quick question. I apologize, I didn't get to this earlier. I'm just noticing that I circled it when I did my first read-through. It's under Section 2, General Statement of Policy, letter C. It says, "Only staff members who have a legitimate educational interest in the information will receive notification." Do we have a good idea of what a legitimate educational interest means?
There, if you go further back in the policy, it outlines what would be the need to know for the different staff members to have the information. So it lays it out a little bit further, as well as within the process, how we then notify the various staff members. So it does outline it further as to what that legitimate educational reason would be for specific staff members to know.
So it's a very nice way of saying, "Had I read further," I wouldn't have had to ask this question.
It's just in the policy.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We'll go down here and check a second.
I don't really have a question. I just, I'm not sure if this was part of MSBA or you guys or what, but I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that worked on this, that I really think it's appropriate, the section here in D, where it talks about, the notice will also include any or all of the following. It talks about explanations of what occurred, any mitigating factors, types of situations that might trigger unsuccessful strategies or interventions. I think that so ties into what Mr. Kubus talked about earlier, that the whole PBIS thing, and that it's right here in the policy also, that we need to look at the underlying behavior and, or underlining cause of the behavior, and look at the strategies and interventions to prevent it. So just thank you for having it in the policy also. Thank you.
I'd like to say that was my idea, but I believe it was part of the MSBA model.
Correct.
And just for the viewing public and everybody else to know that, as we go through these policies, there's a bunch of policies that we're doing. Our goal was to do 20 a year as a board. And the policy subcommittee then meets, and the administration works diligently under the special advice of our executive assistant to the superintendent in putting these together. So we're relying heavily on MSBA and their staff of legal people and administrative people forwarding a model to us. We have many policies in place already that we review and make modifications to it, but it's just, it's quite a process that we really do rely on MSBA and their staff of experts in putting these together and forwarding them on to us to see how they'll fit in with ours. So that's just a little background, that as a subcommittee, we go through a lot of these policies and questions, and some have come back for review and have been revised again since we've met over the past few months.
Sorry, I do have a question now that I thought of. What about if we have what we refer to as a guest teacher, or like a substitute para that comes into the classroom? Are they giving a certain amount of information when they come? Because I remember a past experience, when I came into sub, sometimes I knew nothing about any possible behaviors. And I know sometimes that's a concern. So is that something that we are starting to address, so that if they come to sub that day, that they have some information about the student?
In the case of this policy, because this is based on violent behavior and coming into our school district, it would really be, with the overall process of it, would be with our long call reserve, our long call teachers that come in there. We would ensure that, because that staff member is with us for a longer period of time with the students. That goes along with what plans do we have in place in the case that we need to assist the student or assist students. We would include that in those plans. If it's a day-to-day sub, that is not something that's covered in the policy, but it is something that within each building, we would ensure is a part of their process for notification.
Thank you.
Well, now, it does say, though, under letter D, "A person employed by the school board has a temporary substitute in a professional position for the period of his or her performance as a substitute." So is that more of a long call thing, or is that?
And that would be something for each of our buildings, that as they have substitutes coming in, they would ensure that's a part of the process. Correct.
Yes. I did read it. But just in case I missed it, or, so I apologize if it's somewhere in there and I didn't see it or I didn't read it well. But with those incidents of violence, can you tell us a little bit about on grounds, school grounds versus when you're not in the school? But is this related to somebody from the school? If an incident happens outside the school, is what I mean?
I'm just, I'm thinking through your question. If an incident happens, say, an incident happened during the school year and for the hospital-
Let's say students, you know, somebody gets attacked somewhere in the middle of, nowhere outside of the school, away from school, but let's say, student is following another student and something happens.
And so my understanding with this policy is it's written that within the instance of violence, if it falls under that, then the notification, this being the true notification of how do we let other staff members know, that will come into effect. In the case of the action happening, that would fall under a different policy. Wouldn't it necessarily be under this? Because this would be notification once that has occurred.
Is it at all necessary to state that somewhere in this one, that if it happens outside, or there's not, there's no need to include it in here? The fact that it is under a different policy if it happens outside the school?
The physical location of the incident?
Like a sign note, or that's not necessary if it's two different policies? Maybe not.
You know, I feel like I would want to go through this and see if it has a piece within the procedures when we do that, to see if that's noted in here. I don't know off the top of, you know, without looking at that, but I'd like to get that back to you, so you know that.
Yeah, but, yeah, just a little doubt in my mind. Okay, thank you.
Isn't this, this policy pertains to violent behavior? Historically known students who have violent behavior, an incident that might occur is under a different policy and a different situation, but this is known violent behavior students.
But it's known violent behavior that's coming, that either of the students is moving in or that we know about that, and then the notification of that to staff. Correct? Correct.
Anybody else? Oh, we have to vote on it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and that, I believe, Assistant Superintendent Eric Melby gets the rest of these. So first on the list is 509. Looks like we have a delete and replace with the new 509.
All right. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves deletion of policy 509, enrollment of resident and non-resident students.
Second.
Okay.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Chair Oliva, Superintendent Fujitaki and members of the school board. With, with policy 509, it's not an MSBA, you know, it's not a mandatory policy, and it's not even used by any of our neighboring districts in doing research. And so we had the discussion, and the board policy committee had the discussion, I believe, last week with Dr. Mitchler, who's up here with me tonight, to help out that that's more of an operational aspect. But there is, and it's the next thing on the agenda, MSBA policy and neighboring districts have the enrollment of non-resident districts, and so that's the recommendation that we update our policy to be in compliance with the MSBA policy of, and really, non-resident districts, or students, I'm sorry.
So, any questions? I guess the only question would be, should we, instead of deleting this one and making a new one, should we just read the next one and then say, "Replace the existing one with this one?" So we don't delete it and then not approve the next one and have no policy 509? Even though I'm pretty sure that won't happen. Procedurally, what makes the most sense? I'll defer to my co-chair.
I'm comfortable doing it the way we have it.
All right, let's vote on it.
Delete it and then do the next one.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, new policy 509. Let's see what you have here.
Recommend.
If we vote no, we have no policy 509, just so everyone's aware.
Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves new policy 509, enrollment of non-resident students. Second.
So the new policy 509 is really to help us make sure that we're following and reinforcing for us that we follow state rule and guidelines around enrollment of non-resident students in Bloomington schools.
Any questions on this one? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And that brings us to 510. Yeah, that was close, I know.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 510.6 addition and elimination of activities. Second.
So again, this is not a mandated policy, but it does help guide our decision-making in terms of these kinds of decisions. It's a very minor update, some language change. There was a committee referenced in the, in the, in the policy that no longer is active and hasn't been for a number of years, so just updated that, and everything else remains the same.
Any questions?
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that'll bring us to 519. Yes, 519. Director Bertram, you have this one, or?
Oh, okay, you caught me. Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves new policy 519, interviews of students by outside agencies.
Second.
So this is a policy that we haven't had. It is based on MSBA model policy, and I believe will be helpful for administrators and teachers and parents and families in the district. There are situations where outside agencies have to come in, you know, potentially in a child protection case or something like that, or a mandated report and need to, need to speak or want to interview students. This helps staff with guidance on when that's allowed, how that's allowed, that kind of thing. So we would recommend adoption.
I just had a question. This is just a general statement of policy and interviews conducted under the malt treatment. There are no regulations in this, regulations per se in this policy.
Yep, that's correct. And we're really following MSBA, Minnesota School Board Association guidance on that.
Now, didn't we have, I'm trying to remember back to the meeting, and I thought it was included in here, didn't we have one that was similar to this, but it was combined and we, and it was like student pickup, and then there was the other piece of it?
Yep. Some of the discussions, thank you Chair Oliva, was, was perhaps replacing our existing policy 543 with this policy. I believe the discussion at the meeting was to adopt this policy because of the very specific guidelines it gives people, and then do some updating to our 543, which is really about taking students out of school, but keeping it. So that'll be coming in a future meeting.
Excellent, okay. All right, thank you. Yeah, we took that one off the docket, right. And so I wasn't sure if we had redundant language now between the two of these.
I'm not concerned about that, but I do, I do recommend we update that other policy at the next, you know, time we're updating policies.
Okay, all right, thanks. Any other questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so then that brings us to 522.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 522, students ex non-discrimination.
Second.
Good evening, everyone. So this is a policy that's been reviewed as a part of just a scheduled review. We're using the MSBA mandatory policy for the most part, and through consultation with legal, we were asked not to make any real changes to this, so we stuck to that. You'll see that there's some changes for Bloomington, make sure that it's Bloomington-formatted. The assistant superintendent's phone number is updated. And then we also made the change where it said principal to include the term site leader, because some of our sites do not have a principal. So for example, early childhood, having a director there instead of a principal. The other change that was made was including the district human rights officer as someone who would be contacted for reporting under section C3. Any questions?
And this is another one that's just a general statement of policy, no reg- And this is another one that's just a general statement of policy, no regulations are necessary or involved in this type of a policy.
Right, so that was one of the changes that we had questioned with legal was, could we add some of the wording in the policy to a regulation instead? And the recommendation no was to keep it all as policy with no regulations.
Good, thank you.
Typically, the MSBA policies don't have regulations.
Right, that only comes at the local level, where we, where we feel we need them. Thank you.
Just a, just a quick, sort of a housekeeping one. Can I assume that Eric, your phone number, the one that's listed in here, will always and forever be the assistant superintendent's phone number?
I might have to defer to my colleague John Weiser on that question. He's nodding his head yes, that would be the correct.
So that whoever gets this number, if you call in years ahead, if you call this number, you'll get the assistant superintendent?
Yes, and we should just, it's a good thing to note that if that were to change for any reason, we'd need to quickly update it.
Yeah, we have to go back in. All right, great, thank you.
Maybe with all of our Google technology, we do a Google Voice number, so then you could just forward it to whatever cellphone the next assistant superintendent gets, so.
Take the phone home with you.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that brings us to 623.
So I guess back to me. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised Policy 623, grants.
Second.
This is a policy that was under review as part of a scheduled review. There's no MSBA mandatory policy or model policy for us to follow. The change that's been made here was originally, we had a statement, a general statement of philosophy, that didn't have really a direction in it, and so the wording under general statement of policy was changed so that there is a directive being given by the policy. That's the only change that was made.
Any questions? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, and that brings us to 630.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the revised Policy 630, International Student Exchange Program.
Second.
This is another policy that was up for a scheduled review. There is no MSBA model policy for us to follow. Only two changes to this policy. One is that in the second paragraph of the policy itself, you'll see that the words have been added, that students must register with Minnesota Secretary of State office, I'm sorry, that the exchange programs must be registered with the Minnesota Secretary of State's office. So that was the first change. The second change was that in Section 2C of the regulation, we've specified that students must enroll and begin their coursework, if possible, before the beginning of a trimester.
Director Brisham? Just a real quick one, is there any cost for a student to register with the Secretary of State? Do we know?
It's not the student who registers. We, the Secretary of State has approved Student Exchange Program list, basically, and so we would only accept students from that.
Okay, so they have to be registered on that list before we take them?
It's, it's not a student cost thing, it's the organizations that are bringing in the exchange students, and we want them to be approved through that Secretary of State list.
All right, great, thank you.
So instead of someone just calling up the school like, hey, I'm from Canada, want to enroll?
Canadian, I was going to make a Canadian comment for my colleague Andy Kugus, but I'll, I'll keep it professional.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, and I believe that brings us to 801.
Mr. Chair. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised Policy 801, student equal access to school facilities. Second.
This is a policy that was up for regular scheduled review. There's a model MSBA policy, and we've used the model policy here, and just like Policy 522, we haven't made very many changes, as was recommended by legal. And the one change that we did make was to the title, we've included the word student in the title here. The prior title was equal access to school facilities by itself. We have a Policy 806 that talks about family and community access to school facilities. This policy is specific to students, so that's why we added the word student there, just for clarification purposes.
Any questions? Yeah, I'll say in the committee meeting, we probably spent more time trying to figure out the title, because I know I was confused at first, like, why, why doesn't this apply to everybody? And so, yeah, so that was a recommendation that we gave, so. No questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, we'll run the last one.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves new Policy 202.1, School Board Student Representatives.
Second.
We'll look to our superintendent to talk about this one.
Thank you. This policy, this proposed policy, along with all the other policies acted upon by the board tonight, was studied, analyzed, and edited by the board policy committee. At this policy committee meeting, administrators met with the board policy committee and did this work. This is, this policy, this proposed policy is not a state mandatory policy, and there is no MSBA model policy. The purpose of this policy is to define the role of the school board student representatives.
Messing with your mic.
This policy does this by defining who is eligible. It also defines the processes which an eligible student becomes a school board representative, and finally, it defines what a school board representative does. Administration recommends adoption of this report, of this policy. Any questions?
I think part of the nexus of this policy was last spring, Rick and I were talking that, you know, after this year, there's a chance that, you know, he and I might not be on, on the board any longer, so we wanted to make sure that it took us so much, so it took us so long to get to the process of having student school board representatives? We want to make sure that that outlived our terms on the board, so that after we're gone, this policy is still here, so that if the future board decided they don't want to have student school board representatives, they'd actually have to change this policy to do that. So now that, if you guys all vote for this policy, this will be something that I think will keep our legacy for decades. Hopefully, that something that Bloomington School Board will value having students on the board, because I think the year and a month we've had it, I think it's been a great addition. I mean, just hearing you guys today was, was great. I mean, it's both contributing and giving your opinions and views, and so, might just feel on this policy.
I agree, and they can take this back to the schools for your own local boards, you know, as you talk about it, and kind of build it up that, hey, anybody want to do this? You know, it's, could be a two-year term for a junior and a senior, or a one-year term for a senior. So it provides an opportunity to really get some exciting discussion in your student advisories.
Mr. Chair.
And who knows, might be future board members in it.
Could be. Director Corman?
Just have a quick question here about in the second, the general statement, statement of policy and the how. As it looks here, it's very much, it's going to be the board student advisory committee the ones that, that will be doing the whole selection process, right?
Which is the students, just, just so we're clarified, it's the students.
Right. So is there going to be like, how can I say this? How do I explain this? Is there going to be like, a certain guide to follow that process that guarantees that this is going to be a fair process? And I say this because I want to make sure that the selection process really includes a whole bunch of kids, and that that also includes information given to everyone, all groups, all students, so that they know that there is this opportunity, and they can participate regardless of whether they are part of a certain group or a, or a leadership group in the school, you know, or not. So just want to make sure that, you know, that's going to be in place, so that we guarantee that we give equal opportunities to everyone, just as we have in the world's best workforce, where it's very clear, and it stays really clear, that there's going to be a whole diverse group of people being part of the, of the committees.
Sure. So I don't know how to guarantee it, other than the school board has the final say. So the final bullet is, full, full school board will vote on whether or not to authorize the nominated applicant. So if the board says, if you want us to approve the person that you're putting forward, then you might want to get guidance on when you make your application process. So what we're trying to do is give them as much control, give the student body itself as much control over their own destiny as possible, without saying, you have to do it this way. And so the student body, if the students at the school say, the application process that the board student advisory committee is making is not fair, then the students would be tasked to then change that application process. And it would be, the students would have to, would be tasked with changing the screening process, and the students, so you see what I mean? Now, how do they get involved? That's up to the, up to the sites, and we can work with the, with the site leaders, or the principals in this case, or whoever the, the person in charge of overseeing the students at the, at the individual sites. But that's sort of where, where it comes down to is, if we say, okay, well, Ethan just nominated his friend, he didn't actually do anything, we can say, you know what? No, that's, that doesn't work.
But we don't know that. I mean, if he comes, let's say that he, that he's suggesting somebody, right, that, that there is a recommendation coming from him and we trust him, then the board would probably say, yeah, we're not going to go into details of whether or not this is his best friend, you know what I mean?
Well, I mean, yeah, you know, so, so I'm sure by working with the principal, you ask, ask him ahead of time, or ask Jackson ahead of time, okay, so who are you nominating? He could nominate himself, too. But, but we'd say, I, I, I see what, what you're getting at, and I don't know without us saying, the application process is, you have a ballot, kind of like if you're home, kind of like how you elect homecoming king and queen. Do they still do that, homecoming king and queen?
But that's, that's more at school.
Yeah, so you say, so unless you're going to say, you have to pass out ballots to everybody in the school to nominate people, and once they get nominated, they, they come in, and unless we are going to prescribe that, I don't know that you'll get 100% exactly what it is that you're looking for. But the goal is, the students said they wanted to have a voice, and that there was decisions that the adults make, and there's decisions that the kids make. And what I'm trying to do is, well, and, you know, we can, this can be changed, but I just want to make it that this isn't the, us telling the kids that they, that we don't trust their choice.
I wouldn't say that is that I don't trust their choice. I'm just saying that, you know, if this is a policy and it's coming from the board, and we're talking about board, the school board representatives from schools, then is there anything else that we can add there, or, I don't know, I don't, I'm not trying to make things more complicated, I'm just trying to kind of be, I'm just trying to count all of those voices that sometimes don't get included in such important roles as those.
So what I, what I think is better, what will be better next year, not to say that you guys aren't wonderful, I'd say, what will be different next year versus this year and last year, is that now this is a policy. And that now, anybody that's in the audience, or anyone that's watching this, or anybody that's at either school, that says, well, I want to be a part of that, instead of saying, well, I had, I had no idea even about it, or I don't even know how people are chosen to do it, these first couple times are just like, hey, principals, you gotta tell, you gotta help us out, because we need to get this thing off the ground. Now that it's in, in policy, and now that there's, we say, no, there will be an application process, there will be a screening process, there will be this, anybody that wants to choose can come forward, or anyone that wants to be a part of it can come forward and, and say, I want to be a part of this, how do I apply? How do I get to be a part of the screening process? I'm in an underrepresented group, I don't feel like our voice is being heard. How do I get this? And then they can say, well, this, the way that you're putting together this process isn't fair, that's not the spirit of what the school board wants. They could write the school board letter and say, at, you know, XYZ High School, they aren't following the board policy, they're going to nominate someone, and they didn't make a fair process, they didn't do this. So I think by putting this into a policy, I could be completely wrong, I, I really think by putting this into a policy where we say, no, you will have a screening process, now people see it and they can inquire, and if it's not fair, then the board can come in and say, you know what, we have this policy that we have these students, and you're not doing it right.
Well, sometimes things are not fair, and if they're not in a certain document like this one, then there's nothing, nothing else to talk about or to. But I'm just saying, because, you know, just thinking about that, and whether it's now, I don't know what everybody else thinks besides the chair or the superintendent, if anybody has any other kind of suggestion or concern about it, or if it's just me, I'll just let it go. But, you know, just as an example, if it was the legislature giving us the world's best workforce, you know, committee, so they would have told us here, now you decide what kind of people you, you're going to have there versus, this is the kind of people we want you to have there, then we end, we would end up with the situation of even not having a single student, you know, because we can decide, because they trust us and we can decide. But are there any other specific things that, recommendations, recommendations, I would call them, that we could add to, to the documents like this?
Mr. Chair, your version?
First of all, I, I'm, I'm really happy to have board student reps. I mean, I think it was a wise choice to have them on board. I like that, that they're feeling comfortable offering opinions, so keep it up. I like this policy, I like the fact that we're, we're giving the students a little bit of ownership of how this can happen. Now, as far as how this works in individual high schools, I don't know if students have access, or, or student committees have access to Peach Jar, or your version of a bulletin board, or however you share information, but perhaps that's one, one idea. You know, there, there are any, any number of ways that you can share this particular process. It doesn't give a timeline when it needs to start, does it?
That was the other question, too.
So it, you know, if you're, if you're starting to recruit, say, for instance, Ethan, you're graduating this year, when do you, when do you feel like you're going to start recruiting for a possible replacement? Would it be a month ago? Would it be after the Thanksgiving break? Is there a time in your head when you're thinking, when do we start recruiting? And then you can start formulating how you actually do that recruiting.
So what I would, I would think that I'd probably start recruiting probably the month of January, just, just the new year, get a new set of faces to look at, because I don't think that's, I mean, student government usually is what, like, that's who goes to the, the board student advisory council meetings. We have a subcommittee for that, so that would be, it'd be presented to student government, but not only student government would get this opportunity, we'd, what I would think is that I would announce it to the whole school, make sure that everyone gets this opportunity to, and then go about that however many people apply. I don't know how many people will, but I think January would be a good starting ground, and then figure it out by May, so.
Yeah, I think that's, if I'm, if I'm hearing Director Corman right, she's just asking, over and above the usual students that you might see having a choice or an option for this, how do you extend that to all this, all the students? How do you get it out to the student body? I think you-
Yeah, so, so, like, we, we value our, our, like, news. I think that most, most of our classes usually calm down during the news, not, not like, I mean, during announcements, not during the news. But they usually tend to pay attention in the, for just like 30 seconds that we have announcements. And so I think that once we get those announcements rolling, I think that if people really care about it, and they'll, they'll know, and I think that student government can make signs, post them around the school, say, like, if you want to be a part of our community, part of, a further part of your community and represent your, your school on the school board, that you can apply to do this. And so I think that it'll get the voices of the young, or the, the quieter people who still have voices, I think that they will- I think that they will, uh, get their voice heard if they really want to.
Cool. Then, Jackson, you've got an extra year to start scouting for, uh, your, your replacement. You can, um, reach into the sophomore class and, and get to know all of those kids and because they'll be, you know, yeah, or the freshman class because, because you're a junior, yes?
Yep.
Yeah, so you've got all this time and you can work up a, um, a formula to find the right person and then to extend that invitation to everyone in the school.
But, that's if you look at the.
I'm sure you're working on it right away.
The policy, actually, it's only a one-year term with the opportunity for a second year.
Or two.
So, at the end of the year, if Jackson says, "You know, this is too much a commitment and I don't want to do another year." He could, you know, look at finding a replacement and nominating that individual for next year, so.
Yeah.
It's always something to keep in mind. You don't have to do the whole two years.
Okay.
And the question I had is, you know, under how? It's the board student advisory committee.
Yeah.
How many members are on that? That's made up of the senior secondary students? Is that middle?
No, that's all, that's all the students we just met tonight, so.
Just, yeah, but with who? The, uh.
That's a fluid number.
Who makes up the BSAC?
It's a, it's a, a full range of students from both Kennedy and Jefferson. So, uh, we have sophomores, freshmen will be coming once they know about it. Um, a lot of Kennedy representatives today.
And that, but that number is consistent because when we first started it, the principal recommends a certain number, or how many do they have? Is there a number on the BSAC?
They, no, they sign up to come.
Yeah. And, but, I mean, that's good for a year. They should be here, but sometimes they can't be here, so there might be just ten one time or maybe twenty another time.
Yeah.
But, it still is governed or regulated by the BSAC.
And Director Sagiavietta?
Well, I just wanted to clarify because not everybody probably listening can see what we're looking at. And I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
Um, even though these guys, um, would probably do a great job, they're not the ones doing personally the recruiting and deciding, that it is going through the, the student advisory committee.
Exactly.
That is doing the application process, the screening and selection and developing a timeline. So, I just wanted to clarify that when we're asking them their questions here.
Sure.
Yeah, it's not entirely their job. Um, yeah, I just want to say that I love the work that you guys do. I truly appreciate it, so it's nothing personal for you guys, uh, or any of your friends either. But, I just think that those kind of conversations are important to bring to the table just so that we are constantly aware that, you know, it's not just me, but, you know, sometimes there, that kind of conversation you'll find within the community as well. So, I think it's important to bring it to our attention and also to the attention of our students, um, present here, um, so that when, once we start this process, that they're also aware of, um, um, the importance of bringing this type of information to all of our students, that you as representatives make sure that, that this gets to everyone and that there's not a single student that says, "No, I never heard about it." You know, that you help us in that, in that area, uh, since you are closer to the students. And, uh, maybe, I don't know, as Director Berndström mentioned, I don't know if it's important to add a date of when the process starts?
Well, it can be.
What I understand by this is we're letting the students develop their timeline, we're trusting them to do it.
That they're going to develop their own time?
Yeah, that's the conversation that we had when we were discussing this in the, in the meeting, that we had, I mean, everything you just talked about, we talked about in the policy committee meeting. And we decided that we wanted to make it where it's most, as much student controlled as possible. We don't want to start prescribing everything, "Well, you're going to follow this procedure and you're going to, you know, you're going to try to talk to people from, from this group and from this class." And we want to make sure that they're kind of taking control over it.
Okay.
It's kind of what our, what our attempt, what our attempt was.
Yeah, it seems as a timeline for the process.
And then, when they work it out, they'll bring it back to the, 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 the committee and then we'll discuss it and we'll say, "Okay, well, maybe we need to make some tweaks here, maybe we need to make some adjustments here." Because on that committee, it's still, you know, myself and, and Dick and, and Rick, so we will be in there helping them make sure that the process is fluid and we're reaching all, everybody.
And would this be the case also for a student that happens to have to leave the school? Let's say that we have a student and the student is moving in the middle of their term.
If we have a student rep, you mean?
Yeah, the, the student that we have that is, let's say, is moving in the middle of the term or decides and needs to, to leave, would that be the same process? How do we get a new student?
That might be like an emergency type situation. It might be, you know, talk to the committee, "Okay, Ethan's moving. We need someone from Kennedy."
So, that, that would be decided by the.
Yeah, by the committee. It would probably be a much more rapid process. You're not going to have time to wait months to interview people. It's like, okay, we need a couple of names that are willing to do it, to finish out his term.
Okay.
Not that Ethan's going to go anywhere.
So much he's going to take another year.
Yeah.
He moves to meet a tank.
So, I think by working with the principal, because applicant has to, has to be endorsed by the principal, by working with the principals and, and giving them our expectation that it's going to be a fair and thorough process and that.
Aye, okay.
You know, multiple people will be able to, uh, participate. I, I think by doing that, um, we can alleviate some of those issues.
Okay.
And, you know, in all honesty, some of what I was reading about, um, meaningful student involvement is if, if they go through it next year and it's not fair, that can be as much of a learning process for the student body also. Where now, or if they, if they fail to nominate someone, if they procrastinate and wait until the end and they're like, "Oh, shoot, you know, we don't have time to, to do this." As long, i- if, if we don't allow them to learn from that mistake, then we have failed. But, by them not getting the outcome that we expected, that's not necessarily a bad thing. And so, by allowing them to go through this, by creating a timeline, by creating the screening process, I think they and the student body as a whole can learn. And by giving our expectation, like, they're, I mean, they're sitting here, they hear, there was a, the expectation is that it'll be a, a fair process and that all student voices will, will be able to be heard. I think they'll take that back to the BSAC. And so, maybe, right now, you can be thinking, putting it on your, on your, uh, meeting agenda. If you're going to, if you're thinking you need to start recruiting people in January and you're going to have one meeting in November, one meeting in December, you probably need to come up with a timeline and, and start thinking about a process in your next meeting. Not that I'm telling you how to run your meeting, but it's something that you may want to consider. And so, yeah, I, I, I think, well, I guess I'll leave it with this. The beauty of this policy is that we can change it, or you all can change it next year if it's, if it's not working outright. Um, but, I, I think a lot of your concerns, as Director Bennett was saying, uh, we discussed them and we, we sort of said, "You know what? We want, we want them to own it." So.
Okay.
So, when they do their nominations and, or at least one nomination in May, you can ask those questions. What was your process? What did it look like?
I'll be asking.
Yeah. What did it look like?
So, yeah, and from where I am, what, as I look back fondly on four years ago when I was running for school board, and it's funny because I found, uh, a web cache of my website. One of my big things was student voice and student involvement. And so, uh, I really, yeah, I would really appreciate a, a yes vote on this last policy.
It's more of wisdom.
Yeah, to, uh, as.
One of your final answers.
Yeah, as, as Director Bennett had said. Because, because now they're here, you know, Director Stromman said, "Yeah, we did this once in like nineteen ninety-one and, you know, we, we did it for a year and then it went away." I think now we're saying, "We, we have them here. In order for them to not be here, it wouldn't be just someone forgot to ask if anyone was interested. It would actually take more action to have, to no longer want to hear student voice at the board table." So, uh, is there anything else? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks. To vote on issues.
Vote. You have to be elected to vote. Uh, board member reports, who'd like to start us off? Mr. Bergstrom.
I'll, I'll give it a go. All right, now, let's see. Had the opportunity to attend the parent teacher conferences at Indian Mounds Elementary. Um, no, I don't have students there, but, uh, that is one of my liaison schools and it's, it's always, uh, it's always nice and a pleasure to be able to, to see the, the students. I sat with, uh, Principal Mailen at the, at the entry. And it's nice to see the students come in with mom, dad, grandpa and grandma, whoever they had come in for that particular evening, and they say, "This is my school. Come on, I'm going to show you where I go to school. I'm going to take you down to my class. Oh, and that's the lunchroom and that's the media center. And we have a third grade or a second grade or a first grade tour guide." And it's just, it's really, really nice to see that and I'm, 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 I'm happy that I had the opportunity to do that. I was there for about an hour and a half and, and watched many different families come in with their kids. And when the teachers weren't with the students and family, I got to go in at a quiet time and just say hello and, and, uh, ask how things were going. It's, it's nice to just sort of touch base, um, check in with them, but I was there that particular evening, uh, sitting in front to see the, our, our student tour guides as they came through the schools. That was followed up, it happened to be that same night, I attended the Kennedy PTA meeting. Uh, they had Detective Potter from Bloomington, um, Police Department come in and she speaks specifically on internet and cybersecurity. And I've had a chance to listen to her give this presentation in different iterations over the last four or five years. And there, there hasn't been a time when I, when I sit and, um, listened that I didn't learn something new. There's a new website, there's a new this, there's a new that. And just when I thought I had all, all of the, the websites that my sons might be sneaking on, there's a new one or there's three new ones. And, and now I've got to go study those and I got to go check my son's phones. Um, and, and just to be that, uh, that Snoopy safe parent, uh, so the kids in front here are saying, "Yeah, see, there's another parent that does this." Um, but, really, when she, when she gives these presentations to Detective Potter, she's, she's really very good. And most of the time, the students are not necessarily welcome, certainly at, at middle school. She's going to talk about some things that, that tender young ears probably don't need to hear, but moms and dads should be aware of. So, if you, if you haven't attended one of those presentations, I'm sure that Detective Potter can be reached at Bloomington Police Department and, and just see if there's a way that, that she might be able to, you could catch the next presentation that she gives. They're very informative. That happened to be the one time then that when I was, um, trying out the new furniture, the, the flex learning they had just wheeled it into the, uh, media center at Kennedy. I attended a, uh, I, I believe it was an MSBA sponsored event. It was Coffee and Conversation. It was over at Hopkins Eisenhower Community Center, which is right across the street or the parking lot from where, um, Director Bennett teaches. And we had, uh, this was, um, I'll call it professional development, but it wasn't a stereotypical, um, presentation in that they didn't present to us, "Here's an agenda, here's what we're going to talk about, here's a slideshow." It was ninety minutes of about thirty-five or forty board members from around the metro area districts talking about what was on, what was on our minds. What did we think was, was an issue that was worth talking about and sharing information? How do you do this in your district? How do you do that in your district? How do you handle this? How do you handle that? And there were three or four MSBA staff members there. There was a, a three-panel, the old, old-fashioned, um, dry erase board and, and he had fifteen different colors of dry erase markers and we filled them all up. It was ninety minutes of conversation of give and take, of listen and learn, and we filled every single one of those panels up. And it was a lot of really, really good information, something that perhaps I hadn't considered. Uh, here's something we can try in this area, here's something we can try in that area. I was able to ignite a conversation about returning an adjustment for inflation on the, on the, um, funding that, that we get from the state and we haven't had that since two thousand and three. But, it was that type of conversation that was shared around that table. And then it was all summarized and actually what they did was they took, um, pictures of the board and sent it to all of us who had signed up. So, there was thirty-five or forty of us, but it's those types of conversations that I really look forward to. It's, it's professional development. It happens at, at strange times, at, at odd times. I was fortunate to be able to make it. It was an early morning, it was seven-thirty, something like that. And I had to make my way through traffic up there, but it was certainly worth it. Um, last item on here is I attended the teacher conferences at Kennedy. First and foremost, I want to say thanks to all our talented staff for making themselves available. They, um, uh, if you haven't had a high school, uh, parent teacher conference, um, they have them in the gym and, and majority of the teachers are in the gyms. And they, they have, at least at Kennedy, I haven't been to, uh, my sons go to Kennedy, haven't been to Jefferson one. They have the, the teachers numbered and then there's a, a, um, a map so you can find your teacher, you can go to the station, you wait in line. If there's ten people here and there's two over there, you can sneak over to the one where there's a shorter line. Um, great conversation, teachers know all of the students very well. But, what I wanted to make, uh, make mention of was I did actually take the opportunity to leave the gym. I ventured out and there, there was, uh, there's like an art class, there's a cooking class, there's some classes with, that aren't represented, you just can't do it in the gym, you go to the, you actually have to go to the classroom. And I was really thankful that I walked down the hall and stumbled my way around and actually found the right class. Um, I went to the, uh, the food class and, uh, there was a, a student teacher from Mankato State there. Um, she enjoys her time here and I think is leaving at the end of this try. But, our, our, our food teacher, the one that I talked to, had been with the district for twenty years and, and was just, I, I know that she's doing something right because both of my sons have had her and they both came home and said, "You got to, you got to see what I made." And if you don't have sons, if you don't have boys, when you ask them how their day goes, they say, "Fine." "How's it going?" "Good." "Did you learn anything?" "Yes." But, when they came home from food class, they were, "Here's the ingredients, can we try this? How do I work the stove? Show me how to do this, Dad." So, I know that particular teacher is making an impact, at, at least on my sons. So, I wanted to make sure that I gave a shout out to our, our foods teacher over at Kennedy. And, um, and I, I know, I know she's making an impact because our, our sons were just raving about whatever it was they were cooking. So, I'll, I'll end my, my report on that particular note.
Thank you. Would you like to go next?
Go ahead.
Nobody?
Oh, well, nobody else is going to go? Um, just really quickly, I attended our insurance committee meeting. Um, for people that don't, don't know, um, our district is self-insured and that committee reviews things like the high cases and what types of things people are seeking medical care for and then always looking at the fund balance and making sure that we're maintaining, um, balance to cover all future cases that might come in. And there's representative from all the bargaining units there that are all part of the insurance committee. Then I also attended the, um, it's now called the Early, Early Learning Services Parent Advisory, instead of what, I don't know what we used to call it, the.
Parent advisory.
Early childhood, wasn't it? The early childhood parent. So, it's now, so it's now Early Learning Services Parent Advisory. And so, I attended their committee and, um, at that evening, Mr. Kaufman was there to do the, um, information, um, regarding the referendum for that meeting. And then, um, I also had a chance to attend, um, the Somali Parent Forum, um, which was a wonderful experience and, um, had great questions there. And I just wanted to say one more thing, um, tied to bullying and, um, our presentation earlier. Um, so, I think Mr. Kubus mentioned that orange is the day that, or Wednesday is the day that some people are wearing orange, so I just wanted to say that this is Unity Day. It says, "Together against bullying, united for kindness, acceptance and inclusion" is Wednesday, so everybody wear your orange. And it says, "Make it orange and make it end." And then, um, it's, it says, um, Send one large orange message of support, hope, and unity to show that we are together against bullying, and united for kindness, acceptance, and inclusion. So hopefully everybody remembers to wear orange. Thank you.
Who else? Okay, so our board student advisory council committee did meet following our last regular school board meeting. That includes, that's Tom, Dick, and I. And we discussed how we'd proceed with the high school student meetings and with the middle school meetings. The high school meeting, we said, pretty much we liked what we did last year. And so we'll just go with that. With the middle school, we came up with some topics that we can discuss with the middle schoolers, because it's always, it's more of a challenge to find, um, the right topics where the, the middle schoolers will feel like they, um, their voice really has an impact. A lot of them are just happy for, you know, to hang out, have the conversation, and, you know, maybe get some cheese pizza. But, you know, for us, we wanna, we're trying to sort of get them ready for when they get to high school, these, uh, more impactful meetings, so, uh, that went well. And that concludes my report, and I guess that'll bring us to Superintendent.
Great, thank you, I have three items. First, administration requests a motion to establish a retreat on November sixth, beginning at six PM at the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce offices. The discussion items include vision and strategic directions.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay.
The second topic is, please recall that our district helped draft and pass the Innovation Zone Bill by the Minnesota State Legislature. Our district exploring the feasibility of preparing an application to be designated an Innovation Zone district. Applications are due at the end of January. This is just, uh, for your information. Finally, the advisory team will hold a second meeting of this school year tomorrow at Indian Mounds Elementary. That concludes my report, thank you.
Okay. Is there any other business coming for the board? Hearing none, will adjourn.